Please call the rule.
Good evening, President Hines.
Here.
Vice President Cobb.
Here.
Director Leon.
Here.
Director Vonbright.
Here.
And Director Keating.
Here.
We have a virtual quorum.
Righty, thank you, and welcome back Director Leon. It's good to have you back home, safe and sound.
Thank you. I had a very interesting travel trip to South America, so it's good to be back amongst all of you, so.
Well, welcome. We'll move on with the agenda to item number four, the Superintendent's Report. 4.1 COVID-19 Update. Superintendent. Superintendent, Carla, are you there?
Okay, you have to unmute. I should know that.
Okay.
Okay, hear me? Okay.
We can hear you and we can see you.
Okay, great. It's a pleasure to update you today regarding our progress during the COVID-19, all the work that we've been doing. And it's been pretty, pretty fast-paced, but I think that our crew is doing a really good job. Next slide. I love this next slide. I think, can you advance the slide, please? Okay, I'm gonna talk to you about it. The next slide is really a timeline of events, there it is. And the reason I love to show this is because it seems like we have been doing this forever, and actually, it's been barely a month. And so, I think I highlighted some of the times last time, but it's hard to believe that our first case, confirmed case at Mary Lyons School was March 7th, followed on March 9th by Lowell, Sheridan, and Wilson. The 10th was our first day of free meals for those closed schools. And then on the 12th, I'm skipping some things, I'm looking at highlight, highlights, then Governor Inslee on the 12th, directed the closure of Pierce King and Snohomish County Schools, March 16th to April 24th. But then, on March 16th, all schools were closed, and that was the same day that we launched our online family resources. And we also started getting ready those, those instructional packets. On the 23rd, when we knew we were gonna have many, many, many more students who needed meals, on the 23rd, we launched a meals program that included some bus routes, we'll talk to you a little bit about that, and we opened the day camps. And then, on, back on the, on the 24th, this was important, we started distributing those printed packets at 10 middle school sites, and I'll talk a little bit about those, we've talked about them before. And then, on the 26th, is when we started, we updated our educational opportunities, and teachers and schools developed remote learning plans. 27th, expanded day camps, and then, I like, April 1st is when we started our distribution of laptops to families. And we, April 2nd, was, we just recently, we recently got the order this week to extend the stay-at-home order to May 2nd, May, excuse me, May 4th, and closed buildings for the remainder of the year. So, that has been quite a journey, and it's kept everybody on their toes and really working. If you look at the next slide, this next slide is a real, gives a real picture of where we're distributing food. I think it's important that we highlight the Tacoma community and really talk about how great they are at looking at what the need is. So, we started at those 10 middle school sites, and very quickly found out that there were people who couldn't even, who couldn't get to the middle school sites and needed additional assistance. And so, I think we're running 40 bus routes on top of the middle schools. And there are several other partners who have worked with us to distribute, to distribute food, I can't even name them all. But a big shout-out to Amanda Scott-Thomas, who's connecting volunteers and different programs and different community folks that wanna help, she's brought them to the forefront to make sure that we can get those meals served and get those things done. This next graph, next slide, is pretty, is pretty awesome. It talks about how many meals we've served. So, you, you know, it doesn't count it day by day, but you can see that by the end of Week 1, we had served 20,000, 22,086 meals, and by the end of Week 3, we've served 79,094 meals, quite a feat. So, we're continuing to look at need and figure out where it is, and to make sure that we serve our students. So, that's meals. We also wanna talk a little bit about day camps. Dr. Garcia's on the, is on our, is at the meeting. So, if you go to the next slide, he will embellish this slide about day camps and tell us what's going on.
So, thank you. We have three different sites right now, and we have multiple partners that served on a task force from MultiCare, the Franciscans, GreenTrick, GTCF, Banford Foundation, and then several partners. We're actually serving over nearly 20 different agencies now, because the numbers continue to rise every day. And we have over 100 families and 125 students through an online registration process. A big shout-out to Pierce County Connectivity Communities, who provided some additional financial support for our providers that are able to help us keep the doors, or help them keep their doors open through June 16th, June 19th, that final closure day. So, our plan is, is that we are going to continue to run at least these three sites all the way through, because of that great community support. Next slide.
This next slide you may have seen before, go ahead to the next slide. Which just talks like, about those online educational resources. A packet for each grade, and included special education, additional activities, and free resources. And if you needed the next slide, it's those, the next slide, please. They are also coordinated with learning packets. If you look at the next, next slide, are the actual packets. And what's exciting about these, what's important to me that you know, is that our Teaching and Learning Department have included reading, math, science, social studies, and physical education in the packets. We have the Family Resource Page that's aligned with what's going on, that's aligned with many online learning platforms. And the packets are also provided on this webpage as a PDF. We've just released our third at-home learning packet, so they're being refreshed. And on the next slide, you'll see that, on the next slide, it shows that we're getting ready to go round 2, and on April 14th, on April 14th, you can, you can get a new package. So, those parents that have gone through those first two, and you wanna look at the next round, those will be, those will be ready next. I wanna make sure, and then, you know, we had the, the timeline when our OSPI really said, "We want you to expand and do that one-on-one instruction." So, I want the public to know, if you look at the next slide, two things. One, is that we've really included whole-child lessons. And so, Laura Allen, our Whole Child Coordinator, along with counselors and social workers and family liaisons, have just been working non-stop, non-stop, excuse me, to provide resources and guidelines to make sure that our students going along with that education also continue their work in problem-solving and goal-setting, and identifying emotions, and making sure that, you know, we continue that journey of really helping our students with their learning. Next slide. So, then, when we got the order from our state superintendent that we really needed to look at a distance learning framework, it's when our teachers really went to business and put together these distance learning formats, and this really was to enable students to continue practicing and learning at home. And it started about two weeks ago. We have a learning framework for elementary school, middle school, and high school. Our teachers are working to deliver lessons through email, phone, and Microsoft 360 platform, the team form, the team format. Our teachers have been lesson-planning, delivering lessons based on priority standards. And we're really proud of the work that they're doing, and a lot of collaboration going on, teacher-to-teacher and collaboration with their students. We've had well over 2,000 teachers also taking us up on professional development opportunities alongside with their students, to meet the needs of our students. And so, good instruction is going on. It's not worksheets. It's really different activities, allowing students to use their brain and to do problem-solving, and to really do good resources. Our World Language students have been, you know, working in video conferencing with their parents' permission. And we've talked about, we've done advanced placement work on an online platform. So, I just really want the public to know that our teachers are really working and, you know, going the next step to get ready, to get our students ready. And of course, it'll continue, as we know that our time has been extended. The next slide, I'm sure that you've heard or been a part of this, is that we needed to pass out devices. We find, we realized that while, you know, that we needed to get these devices in the hands of our students. And I've asked Dr. Garcia to talk about some of the things that are going on with devices and our plans also for the future.
Yeah, so, thank you, Superintendent. Real quickly, we, through our Laptops to Kids program, we've given, been able to donate over 2,000 devices to students in needs. There, we started off with our seniors and students in advanced placement classes. And the reason was that they had priority learning needs, both from an online perspective, that we needed to ensure that they had those. We went on and have been exploring several different partnerships. President Hines has led some of those efforts behind the scenes to explore how can we bring in more devices to potentially put into our community's hands. We've also engaged and entered a partnership with the Foundation for Tacoma Students, and they are working on connectivity in, in spots, I would call them connectivity deserts, if you will. And they are working with business leaders and city folks to try to address some of the connectivity issues. We also recognize that we're going to, as a board and a school district, have to explore, so we're not in a better place, so we are in a better place in the future, the capacity of one-to-one devices, and what does that mean for our district? So, this will be the first of many previews and many conversations about one-to-one student devices in, in the Tacoma Public Schools. We also have, and we shared this at our, I think, our last update, we have already purchased additional devices to be used as loner devices. We all have to remember that the timeline has changed just this last week, so we didn't think that we were going to be out for the rest of the year, although none of us knew. We were, I guess we were all hoping that we'd be able to come back after April 24th. But now, this new news puts us in a place where we have to continue to explore not only what does one-to-one devices mean, but what are the devices and the connectivity, as well as the curriculum that's necessary to deliver this. None of this is designed to replace six-and-a-half hours of high-quality instruction and great relationships with our teachers, but the one-to-one devices and the devices in kids' hands will be able to help, I think, move beyond just support, but enhance those wonderful teaching relationships and counselor and staff relationships. Next slide.
Josh, can I, can I ask a question? Josh?
Please.
On that last slide, you, there was something about a survey started yesterday, can you talk a little bit more about that? Is that about the need, or is that, was that about the computer need, or what was that about?
It's, thank you. It's a survey that both gives us some baseline data around the need for devices and the need for connectivity inside of a home. A lot of us in the community have been talking about, do you have internet access? But what we really are finding is that many folks may have a smartphone, that they're able to access emails and information, but as kids need a dedicated space to access the internet more regularly, we're finding that there are bigger gaps. So, that survey will help us see where students go to school. Do they potentially need a device, and do they need internet access to, to facilitate their learning?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We are continuing to get new guidance and support around ensuring our seniors can graduate. But the schools have been working for nearly a month on making sure that all of our students that were on track to graduate continue on that track progress. And so, every senior, we're analyzing their pathways, the graduation requirements that are necessary, their graduation pathway, their alternative assessments, and going in a student-by-student case to examine what are the needs, what are the trends, to secure that. That's not unique to this time of year, so we're well-positioned to do that. In addition, we're working with students that are still credit retrieval, need credit retrieval opportunities through our Agenuity Platform. Two big things that are going to continue to evolve over the next couple of weeks. One is the new rules and guidelines from the State Board of Education that are coming out that allows us to have some flexibility to waive credits. We are very cautious about that flexibility, because we need to ensure that the students have the credits when they leave in order for them to be eligible for higher education opportunities. So, this new guidance just came out late yesterday, early today. So, we're working through that and those flexibilities to see if there are opportunities, which may mean that the board would be involved in making policy recommendations on those, if necessary. And then, the second piece is, over the next week or week and a half, we'll really be diving into clarity around grades and grading. Now, remember, this decision just came from the governor, and we are looking still from guidance from this governor's office and OSPI around, is there going to be a state definition or approach, or will that be the local opportunities? And so, we're working with our teachers, as well as with our high school principals, to look at several different options for high school credit-bearing classes, and that'll also have an impact on the seniors. The final thing, or final topic, is there's been a team of folks that have been examining the possibilities of virtual ceremonies, as well as social-distance ceremonies for seniors, both graduation and senior awards night. We're also a little bit on hold, because the governor has come out in his last press release and said there may be opportunities. So, we're planning a multi-pronged approach, one virtual, as well as a second, if we're giving permission, what would social distancing protocols look like? And we've had several key community partners volunteer to provide support, if we can pull that off. And that really will be determined whether or not we have permission to facilitate those in any kind of social distance capacity. So, those would be the big senior updates.
Thank you, Josh. The next slide, kind of, I'm sure everyone's, you know, what, what have we been thinking? And the next slide, kind of capital, you know, outlines some of the things we know we've gotta figure out based on going, you know, not coming back in school and not knowing what the fall's gonna look like. So, the next slide, the first part talks about graduate recognition, and Josh kind of covered that, about we're looking at different ways to recognize our graduates. We also will take a look at summer programming, we're not sure what that's gonna look like, you know, what's the landscape going to be? And we want to make sure, Josh talked about making sure that we have students that if they are credit deficient, that we can use the summer to get them, you know, in online classes, and make sure that they have an opportunity to, you know, to get more opportunities to graduate. And we also know that based on, you know, whatever our parameters are around social distancing, you know, that we can provide additional opportunities for different students, students with, students with disabilities or special needs that we might be able to do some summer programming. What will school look like in the fall? I'm sure we all have, mostly what we've been doing is brainstorming. We do know that our students will have increased access to devices, that will have an increased access to virtual lessons. We've looked at our, we've already started to look at our curriculum maps to build in instruction and review and practice on critical standards that students missed during the closure, so we're gonna be working on that and talking about what they need in the summer. We don't know what the fall may look like. We may have to have supported ways for to still continue social distancing in school. You know, I think maybe the, the days of the long lunch line or the, you know, the lunchroom may look a little differently, so we've got to continue to look at that. We know we'll continue to focus on the whole child. We know that we'll continue to find safe ways to support our students' mental and physical health. We know that we'll continue to work with partners that have been critical to help us get this work done. And we know that we'll continue to make sure that our students have the best quality education. And then, just taking care of our Tacoma Public School family, I think that's so important. And Board members, tomorrow in your Friday report, you'll get a graph that our Human Resources Director with her team put together that I think is so, is a great document, because what it talks about is what everyone is doing, you know? So, sometimes you think, well, gee, you know, who's working? Trust me, everybody is working. Administrators are on-call, there's they're looking at the middle school sites, helping with distribution of food and packets. Our principals are, you know, working with their teachers and having staff meetings and directing their work. Our teachers are on-call, there, some of them are coming in and helping with site issues, and they're also teaching. Our paraeducators, a lot of them are helping with the food distribution. And, and the day camps, our transportation and bus drivers are for sure supporting day camps and the Meals on Wheels and the food and the work. And I could go on and on, I didn't mention everybody. Our nurses are providing the, you know, the screening for students that are coming in, and they're working with our families and supporting them with their health needs. Our office professionals are pretty much doing anything we ask them to do. Our custodians have been on-call, and they're cleaning, and we're getting ready, since we know now that we're gonna be not coming back, they're gonna start being able to do that deep cleaning. We know our nutrition service workers are out there every day, can, you know, coming together to put together 8,000 to 12,000 meals. Our security are providing the benefits, you know, going to all these sites. And our Building and Tradespeople are on-call, and they're working and taking care of things. So, everybody, everyone is working and contributing. I think one of the things that Tacoma Public Schools does really well is people work seamlessly together. We have lots of opportunities during our regular school year to get together and share our mission and our vision from departments, and so, people know what each, which each department does, and that has really helped us in this time, that and our relationship with our community partners. We're gonna continue to do the planning. My leadership team's still coming together every week to look at the issues that have come up, and there's lots of unintended consequences of these actions, and we work together to solve each one of them. I have an incredible team. It has been such, such fun, sitting with them together and having people peel off and solve a problem and bring it back, so, good work. And thank you to our school board, who's been involved. I know they've been doing videos and keeping track. Our President Scott Hines has gone behind the scenes and figured out what to, you know, what to do. Everybody in their own work has gotten some kind of, you know, interaction. That's what's great about having board members that can say, "Hey, this is what I heard from a constituent," or "This is what I've done." They're in touch, and they're definitely guiding the work and providing the policy. Team Tacoma has been great, so thank you. Then next.
Thank you for that presentation. Just a few questions. I think that there's a common perception that if we just provide a device and access to the internet, that that's all that's required to facilitate distant learning. And I know Josh touched on philosophically, the Tacoma School District has never adopted a policy for one-to-one devices, so that may be something that the school board is gonna have to take under consideration sooner than later to determine if we're going to be a true one-to-one device. Knowing that our success in the performance of the district over the last few years has been created by providing a variety of ways for students to learn, can you talk a little bit about what are some of the limitations of distant learning now, and things that the board should be keeping in mind as we get into a sustained period of time where it looks like we're gonna have to provide some sort of online distant learning for our students and families? You're muted, Carla.
I'll start, and Josh, jump in. But, you know, we all know that the education that we receive, whether you went to a, hey, online college or whatever, that you need that human touch, and that different students have different facility with devices, and they need different kinds of instruction and help. We've found that our counselors and our social workers and all of our support personnel are needed to help students. And so, it is not realistic to expect that a student can sit in front of a device for six hours, it's not even recommended, and just do all their learning online. There has to be interaction, there has to be ability to do hands-on learning, there has to be the ability to interact and, and try their concepts and get feedback on their work. We know that, that feedback loop, that, that application of learning is when you really take that book, you know, that book learning, that knowledge level, and turn it into a reality. So, you have to have that application. So, no, we won't be at a time when we just say, "Go use your device," or "You go to your school." Even when I go through classrooms and I look at students interacting with the computer, there's a teacher coming by all the time, checking work and seeing what you learned, and asking them to write. So, it's an interactive process. Josh, anything else?
I think, Carla, I think you did a good job. The only additional things, I think, where we're learning from our, our families, as well as the functionality of, let's start with devices. If we have multiple kids in a family, there needs to be multiple devices in order to access the learning. Just the pure scheduling of being able to connect with a teacher. When we're all going to school at the same time, and that's, big master schedules are all worked out, it's a little different when you're at home and you have one device, and you're trying to coordinate two or three kids' learning opportunities with a single classroom teacher's schedules. That, so that's one challenge that we have to overcome, the number of devices. The second is the connectivity, and so, a lot of families have connectivity through a phone, but that isn't the, that isn't going to support the learning that is necessary for four or five hours a day, six hours a day to, to do that. There are platform policies around digital citizenship and private, privatization, or private, I'm not saying the word, being private with videos that we have to continue to explore. There are some unfortunately horrific horror stories that are happening around the nation, where school districts maybe are not being as diligent in releasing platforms, and folks are coming in and posting inappropriate comments. There's even a, a, an etiquette that we have to work with in our community, you know? When you're entering an online learning environment, you're not in your pajamas, laying on your bed, you're in a, your student attire. Those opportunities have to be explored. And then, you have the curriculum that has to be addressed, as well as the assessment and the feedback loops, as Carla mentioned. And so, if we look at it from those three pillars, none of that has to do with what Carla also mentioned, is the the ability to see someone in live time and have that human context to, to see a facial expression and say, "Oh, I see little Joshie didn't get that, maybe I need to double back." Or, "I see that Joshie's distracted, and maybe I need to help him in there." Or, "I see Joshie's ready to move on," and what are those opportunities? And so, as we think about how we become more virtual in our learning experiences, I think you'll find that we're gonna continue to recommend enhancements, not replacements. I think you'll find that we're going to continue to recommend enhancements, not replacements.
Okay, thank you. And I know at the press conference on Monday with the Governor and Superintendent Reichdahl, the question was asked about online learning and who's doing it well and private versus public schools. And Superintendent Reichdahl said that nobody has figured it out, that nobody really is built to provide sustained distant learning, that smaller student bodies tend to have more immediate success and that there are some districts in the state that have been early adopters of certain technology platforms. Carla, I know that you're in regular communication with superintendents around Pierce County and the ESD and around the state. What are you hearing from your colleagues in terms of what's working? And I know that when I talk with my colleagues on the school board, that we realize school districts can't be, can't take a utilitarian approach where we try to do the greatest good for the most people, that we have to do the greatest good for all of our students. And that includes students with IEPs and 504 plans that may require some additional supports and accommodations, ELL students. So what are you hearing from your colleagues around some of those challenges and some of the things that the board should be considering going forward through policy or process that we may need to adopt in order to meet the needs of all 30,000 students?
I would say Director Hines, that the major thing we're hearing is just about connectivity. Getting a handle on who has it and who doesn't and how it impacts, you know, what we do. So I say there is, even in districts where they said, hey, yeah, we're ready to buy it. You know, it's not there, it isn't there to purchase. So I would say one common theme is that we all realize the responsibility that it's going to take to make sure that connectivity doesn't become, you know, that it has already become an equity issue and that we really have to look at that. I also think that there have been discussions just about, you know, make the, the protocols that go with this kind of learning and how do you protect students and make sure, you know, that they're not subjected to more bullying? And, you know, how do you, what are the penalties for students if that's not their best mode of instruction? You know, some people are really, really good at online learning and some it's not a modality that plays into their strengths. So I would say those are three of the conversations that we've had.
Okay. There are technologies out there, platforms out there that would help us to bridge the gap with some of our special needs students that we would have to consider how they would be implemented in Tacoma. And I'm assuming professional development and other training so that our teachers and parents feel comfortable using those different platforms. And it's not, I guess my question is, it's not just going to be a one, everybody uses Microsoft Teams and that's how all the learning gets done or Zoom, but there may be some additional technological platforms that come in to help students that are ELL or students that have an IEP and that we're exploring that right now.
We have already, we have teachers that are using a myriad of technological aspects. So we have professionals in our, in our special ed that have already keyed in. You know, we have so many students that are using different technologies. I, I think the board, most of the board was there in our bond campaign when we had the Braille student that came up and, you know, used his device to, you know, to help him read his speech. So no, we're utilizing that and know that there's more out there that we have to capitalize and use.
When we talk about donations, I know that our distribution last week showed us that we really do have a great need in the community. And I know that we've used our laptops for kids program and that we've also are making an investment through the technology levy to purchase additional machines. And then Superintendent, you alluded to conversations you and I have had with some private sector technology companies that can make a donation. If those companies make a donation of device, is it just as simple as that donation? Or will our TPS team need to touch that device in order to have it operational for students?
Yes, we have to touch it. And if you talk to our CIO, Ed, he will tell you that, you know, we have to be able to support it, we have to, you know, we have to know, we have to make sure that the networks in our schools support it and that we have the professional development for our teachers to know, you know, the differences with the technology. So no, it's not just as simple as hand and mouth.
Okay. And I'm going to quickly open up for questions to my colleagues if there's nothing that, if there's something that needs to be addressed. So I'll start with Vice President Cobb. Do you have any questions or comments on the presentation or the go-forward plan?
Yeah, I have a few. And a couple of questions and comments. Just comment related to devices and internet access. I think that the rationale that you all laid out about how we rolled out the first set of devices was really sound. And just moving forward, I feel like a group of students we haven't had much public discussion about, but I know you all are planning around, are students who are impacted by homelessness. So as we get survey data back, I just ask that a priority be placed on identifying the needs that our students who are impacted are having with regard to technology and in addition to devices and continue to work broadly on the internet access issue. I just, I think that considerations around headsets would likely be good to consider for that population in particular, just given the nature of like shared living spaces. And so I just ask that, that group of students get some special consideration if you're able to in our planning to roll out additional devices. On the topic of plans for senior ceremonies and getting students to the finish, I don't know our plan at this point to engage students in that conversation. But as we think through the options, I just think that I'm, I'm sure that there's a captive audience of a handful of our senior leaders of thinking of Mary in particular and some of the other student body representatives or students who are highly engaged in the building the culture around their school communities, just vetting some of our ideas through them. And who knows, they might have a really creative solution to offer some personalized acknowledgement for any student using technology and using all of these platforms that we're all getting more familiar with. So just moving forward as we lead up to getting to a final plan and in light of the continued guidance that comes out about whether or not we can gather or any of that, I just ask that we reach out to some of those seniors to get their feedback on where we're going. And then lastly, on the point of thinking forward to how we come back and how we use the summer, I just think that a lot of the conversation that we've had about the fact that distance learning and online learning can't fully replace the experience that students would have in the classroom. Based on what the superintendent and the governor said in their press conference most recently, it seems like they're, like you've already outlined, we don't know if we're going to come back face-to-face right away. We don't know if we might come back in some modified face-to-face where like Carla shared, we might have shorter lines at lunch and have to modify the way that we do something. Or we might come back in the fall to completely just still, we're doing distance and online learning, we just don't know at this point. But I just think that, and this is just Andrea making a comment, I just think that the way that we frame the engagement and the distance learning that's happening right now matters for how we plan to catch students up and get them access to the skills that they miss. Like if we assume that this is repla, it doesn't sound like, we all agree that this is, that distance learning isn't replacing the six hours of the engagement and with friends and teachers, it's not replacing that. So we all agree that it's not a one-to-one translation of the learning they would have gotten to what we're doing now. So my point is, I just, if we treat what we need to do in the fall as intervention and support, I feel like we'll get one outcome. But if we think about what all kids are going to need, like in that MTSS frame, what's our universal approach to this event right now? I, I just think that sets up a different thinking about how we try to build in time, additional time for all kids, not just students who are already in need of some additional support and who might need the thing that we give all kids to catch them up, plus the additional interventions and supports that they needed anyway. So I don't know if that's completely clear in my thinking right now, but I just think how we, how we conceptualize what's happening right now in this distance learning approach matters for the solution. So I'm interested to hear more about your planning and it, and what sounds like driven by the assumption that this isn't a one-to-one translation of what would have happened this fall, what isn't exactly what. Yeah, so I'll just stop there because I don't, I feel like I'm rambling a bit. But all in all, I just think we need to keep the conversation going so that the board can be as supportive as possible from any policymaking that we need to adopt or any budget considerations that we need to think through to support like a holistic approach to kind of recapturing this lost learning and keeping kids moving forward.
All right, thank you, Vice President Cobb. Director Baumright, do you have any questions or comments?
I do. First of all, thanks for that briefing. It's amazing to see the amount of work that happened in a very short period of time. And I'm, it's such a moving target and everything, it's almost, we, we did, I think we did a good job of sort of working towards the worst-case scenario while we were still trying to build it because I think we're more ready. And so thanks for that. I did have a question that, I'm looking back here. When you talked about specifically the continuing learning efforts and what we kicked into place already with the principals and the teachers working individually with kids. And Dr. Garcia, you mentioned a couple of things that are so important, that teacher seeing those, you know, one kid in the back of the room struggling and not being able to have that so readily available. What are we, what are some specific strategies or tools? And maybe we don't have them yet, but I'm assuming that we're building them to monitor and adjust those, that continuing learning modality and the efforts that are going forward so that we know, so that the teachers are actually, and I know they're being creative, but that they can actually assess, not just assess through a testing, but they can actually decide and figure out which kids are getting, falling behind with this new learning, distance learning model and how to best modify what they're doing. I mean, do we have something in place, strategies in place for evaluating how things are going?
So each classroom teacher, as they're designing their learning activities, has feedback opportunities inside of there. So they're gathering feedback from there. So if it's a written assignment, they're able to see a student's writing and opportunities there. During this time, they also have technology opportunities. So they may be using a Pearson Math online that gives instant feedback to the student where we're able to track too. So assessment, not testing. So a lot of assessments going on, a lot of feedback in there. Our special education team is reaching out to students and talking to them about what they're learning and what are they struggling, as well as our English language learner staff. So there's opportunities there for some of those, those conversations. What are you struggling with? How can we help you with those pieces and those coordinations? Remember, none of this is, when we, when we talk about the fall, the fall will look significantly different.
Yeah.
In those opportunities. But these feedback, these, this, this time is really critical for us to practice, to try different opportunities and to build the infrastructure necessary for that, including testing, assessments, feedback loops. There's folks that are getting creative, students can film themselves, although it's not a live place, and send that to their teachers. So performance assessment is taking roots. We have amazing classroom teachers that are very innovative, that are gathering feedback and checking in. And we're going to be honest, we're also tracking down students that are not engaging. And so there is that challenge too, is where a classroom teacher hasn't heard. And so we're, we're gathering data on, well, how, where is this student? What are they struggling with? Is it a device issue? Is it an email issue? Is it a lack of packet issue? So we're working through those opportunities as well to find out what is the struggle? Is it a learning? Is it an engagement or is it an access? And so those are all things that are happening all during every day. So when folks are saying, so what are we doing? We have office managers that are helping track that down. We have social workers that are helping track that down, counselors, principals, central office staff. And so folks are really working on that engagement piece and try to get that feedback to pinpoint what is the challenge for the student.
Wow, thank you. That, that really helps understand not only the complexity, but the individual focus, which I think is so critically important. And, and thanks for that. And then is there a way that you're gathering data or being able that the creative teachers that are sharing what they're learning and their techniques with other colleagues that are not at the same school? Maybe, I mean, is the, I assume principals are bubbling up what's working at their, at their schools? I know it's all just beginning, but just thinking about ways to, we, we actually don't have that much time left in this school year. And, you know, trying to take the nuggets that are working and pass them to other people as ideas. I'm sure that's probably happening too.
Lots of collaboration up, sorry, Carla, go ahead, please.
No, go ahead. I was just going to say, you know, that our teachers have active PLCs, learning communities where they get together and those have continued. So they're meeting, you know, on a day a week at a certain time, probably when they used to, to talk about, here's what's working for me, what's working for you and how can we get better? So that's continuing. I just had a conversation with Lisandra at Foss and her departments are getting together and virtually and talking about, you know, what they're doing, what their next steps are. So there's a lot of collaboration going on.
Perfect. Anyway, I'm, so thank, thank you for that. And then my, my, I just wanted to reiterate what Director Cobb had said as well because about the engaging the students and the seniors in what's going to be happening around their virtual graduation or however that happens. I, I think it's, so much has been out of their control. I, I just, I would really encourage that we set up some sort of a mechanism for the seniors across all the high schools to maybe even, they could look at it at a high school level or they could look at it holistically, how, how best to attract that. So just a thought. And I agree all the, go ahead.
Very clear, ease those seniors' minds is we're not talking about doing a PowerPoint presentation for you and for your graduation. And so our goal is to replicate a graduation, the same ceremony, down to the board member accepting the class and senior speeches and videos. And, and so every school, as we know, has their own unique graduation ceremony. And so our initial thinking is, how are the technical opportunities to do that? And so the students will have the same opportunity to bring their voice as they would have in a different, in a traditional year. And so the schools will work with their student population on if it's a video or if it is a speech, those will all be incorporated into a virtual ceremony. And we haven't got all the details, but that is a guiding principle that we will live through. And we, we're not desiring to create one big ceremony. This, Lincoln Abes will have their ceremony, the Foss Falcons will have their ceremony. And most likely it'll be during the exact same time in every there. And we will make it available to the public as well as them. And so there are a lot of details, but rest assured, their voice will be very similar to where they had the opportunities on the same day during the same ceremony.
Perfect. Thank you so much for those clarifying points. President Hines, I think I'm done.
All righty. Thank you, Director Baumright. Director Keating, did you have a question or a comment?
I do. And I just want to reiterate everything that's already been said around, thank you for all of the effort and work that's gone in. It's really reassuring to see families that need to be fed, that are continuing to be fed. So I just, I want to give Nutrition Services, Chris's team, just huge shout out for that. I, right before our meeting, I was on the WASD call and I just want to share this. I haven't looked into it yet, but there's a, apparently a Facebook page called National Adopt a Senior 2020. And it's a community page that was started in, on Facebook in Washington State. And there's the process where you would compare, apparently a community member can adopt a senior and pair, and then work with them individually on how to celebrate them. So it's a pretty ama, I, again, I haven't looked at it yet, but it sounds like a pretty amazing way that the community has stepped up to get involved and really honor our seniors across the state. So I just want to share that, to look into. And then I just have three quick questions. So the packets, are those, is it the community can, or parents can anticipate those being updated on a weekly basis? Is that correct?
I think they're, if I understand, they're getting up- I think they're, uh, if I understand, they're getting updated every two weeks, Lisa. So, uh, each packet will last two weeks and then there'll be a refresh.
Awesome. Thank you. Um, and then when you mentioned world languages, Carla. Um, and is, does that include middle school and high schools, um, um, students that are taking world languages?
So they, the, uh, the, uh, the video is around students, uh, for their IB diploma. Was the first round of of language. And then you're, we'll see a second round when, um, students, uh, are assessing for the world language. Uh, competency exams recognized by the state. And so those will be a variety of students at various high school levels. Uh, that are able to do that. Um, and so they can actually get a, a competency seal in foreign language.
Okay, thank you. Um, and my last question, um, thinking about our specialists. In terms of how they're able to engage with students, um, and I'm really also not, you know, our librarians and our PE teachers. Um, I'm really thinking about our music teachers and how challenging, um, this must be for them. And I'm curious. What, um. What's being thought of or what steps are being taken, taken for, uh, music teachers, um, band and orchestra specifically?
I, I don't, I don't know specifically which everyone is doing. I know that, uh. My assistant, Brianna Jones, had that her music teacher is sending home pieces. Uh, you know, online with her kids and saying, practice this and here's your practice schedule and. You know, you can perform and I'll listen to you on this day. So I don't know how everybody's doing it, but, um. I know that there is certainly some teachers that are getting out there and being creative with how they go forward. I, we, we'll have to ask to get full details. I don't know. Josh, I don't know if you know anymore.
It's, it's variance. Carla did a great summary. There's, uh, folks that are really, um. Just like any other day, um, they, they take, uh, different opportunities, but there are lessons being delivered by those classroom teachers. Um, whenever a classroom teacher has a, uh, a dedicated class. They're to learn, designing and delivering learning activities like they would any other week. Um, and so, uh, there's variants of what does that mean? And one's not better than the other. Um, but the classroom teacher is is really designing those activities and providing feedback from there. So we can get you some examples.
Okay, I, I'm just curious, that seems, uh, yeah, there just seems to be extra challenges specifically with our specialists. So. I, I'm just thinking through that. So I appreciate all that information. Thank you very much.
I just add that, you know, this is really complex and you just mentioned, um, there is a lot of different, um, beyond specialists. Uh, advanced chemistry labs, uh, you know, there's, I mean, there's. Kid, you know that our kids take really rigorous classes. And, uh, that's why it's so important that we get back and get healthy and get through this, uh, so that our classroom teachers can be there. Um, you name it. Um. It's, uh, there's some really heavy content that needs to be, uh, supported by a classroom teacher on a regular basis.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Director Keating. Director Leone, do you have any questions or comments?
Let me unmute myself. Can you hear me? Do you hear me okay?
Yes.
So, uh, thank you very much to all the staff, all the educators in our system. Uh, I've been away for some time here in South America, as I mentioned, so I have not been living it as closely as you have. Um, but it's been, um. Wonderful to see the, the hard work that's come together and this amazing team, uh, that we have in this, in this city. To really, really help these kids, um, continue to learn and keep everyone safe. So, um. Uh, I agree with many of these points that have come up here, um. By all the other, uh, board members. Um, I think I've, I've heard from lots of constituents about. Having input about their graduation. So I'll just echo that. It's been said, uh, several times. Some of the, um, things that, uh, really we're grappling with around our health and safety. Always, we were talking about that before, but of course it's very forefront now. I think as we think about how to connect with these kids and our staff, uh, our whole community. Uh, virtually, it's going to be harder. I think we have to be intentional in the way we really connect with kids. Uh, that are having physical and mental distress prior to this and then exacerbated and made worse by the new pandemic. So. Um, uh, we can talk more about that at a later time, but I think we have to be real intentional about how we reach out. To these kids. As Dr. Garcia said, you can't see facial expressions and attitudes and and body language, um. Very well on a computer or on an email. So, um. I think that our staff are doing amazing things with regard to learning how to teach from a distance now, distance. Learning and distance teaching is something that they're working hard on. So thank you very much. I've seen evidence of that with, uh, my daughter's learning already. Um, and as many of you have mentioned, I think in the previous study session, there's this newfound. Appreciation that should have been there all along. Teachers and educators are appreciated, but they're even more appreciated now. Because as people are doing, trying to, uh, help their kids learn at home. So I think that there'll be some. Um, positive things that will come from this. Um, one of them I hope will be more. Support and funding for public education, um, in addition to support for public health. So there are two things that have been. Have long, long been, uh, not, uh, supported well by our communities. Um, and so in that will come opportunities for us to engage with our legislators. Um, uh, the policymakers and get ourselves more motivated to go out and, uh, and have those conversations around funding. Uh, whether it revolves one device per student, which I think would be a nice goal to get to at some point, but we may not be able to get there overnight. So thank you. Um, to, um, President Hines and Josh and the rest of the staff that have been working on trying to secure more devices. And internet connectivity, because yes, it's not just a device and connectivity. It's, it's the relationships, but without the connectivity and device, you can't get to the relationships very well either. Um, and the packets, of course, are are going to help a lot too. So let's, we'll keep our focus on health as we go through educating. And we know there's lots of questions around when. Um, students will return, staff will return, what the return looks like. We don't have all the answers right now. Um, but I do want to just, um, let everyone know what I've seen, at least on the medical side here. Is that we can succeed and we've been able to, um. Keep a lot of patients, uh, from deteriorating in in the hospital. I'll just tell you, things are looking much better than we expected. Things are not good. But, um, as I work with those patients on the floor, uh, they're lesser than that we expected. So we are, um, doing much better from that medical side. And, yeah, I'd want to just send a message also just to our Latino community. Um, you know, nuestro trabajo no acaba cuidando o enseñando los niños. Todo esto es parte de la salud pública. Educación es muy importante. Y vamos a regresar a educar y ayudar a sus niños y tu familia. Durante este tiempo y en el futuro también. So I'll stop there and I'll wait, um, uh, to hear some more from the rest of the board members if we have more comments. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Director Leone. Uh, and before we move away from this topic and on to the next agenda item. I'd just like to reiterate the timeline that, uh, the superintendent kicked off this presentation with. Uh, that things have moved so rapidly that it was March 12th, a month ago, that was the last time that the school board met. Uh, in person for a business meeting. And it was at that meeting that we adopted a resolution to close schools. That took effect on March 16th. It was two weeks after that that we got guidance from OSPI on what sort of learning we should be providing. And that was the impetus for the packets and the packets had already been planned and in place. Now with the subsequent order from the governor, uh, closing schools for the duration of the school years, we've got a new mission moving ahead. And how we're going to provide sustained distant learning and these online learning opportunities. And I think what I hear from my colleagues on the board is that there is confidence in what we're doing in the interim. That I have seen evidence of our teachers being given latitude to be teachers, to bring their personality. While at the same time trying to create continuity so that we have some structure in the deployment of this for 30,000 students in. In a way that nobody's really familiar with. We're not built to do this, but I think it's become evident that we're going to have to get built to do this. So. Uh, Superintendent, as we move forward, I think that there's going to be ample opportunity for the board to look at ways that we can create policy and process. And align budget so that we have that capability, uh, because I do think we're going to be in this for the long haul. I appreciate your, uh, constant communication with the board. I appreciate, uh, that Director Baumright and Keating have taken the lead on behalf of. The Tacoma School Board to be on those Washington State School Director Association calls so that we are talking to our colleagues. We're learning from one another. Nobody has perfected this. I know, uh, Seattle was delighted to get 8,200 devices. Uh, and they are frantically trying to figure out how they deliver online education to almost 60,000 students. Uh, that we're not in a competition with other districts, but we're learning from, uh, other districts. Then I also want to acknowledge, uh, and Director Baumright and Keating, in addition to Vice President Cobb and I have been on twice weekly calls for about the last month. With our, uh, fellow Tacoma elected officials, talking about that collaboration and partnership with other elected bodies and organizations. To make certain that we're really being creative and thoughtful in how we roll out this distant learning, uh, in the midst of a public health crisis. Uh, and one last question for you, Carl. I know that we're getting a lot of inquiries from individuals that they want to help. Right? And I think that that's this wonderful, uh, emotion that comes out of, uh, crisis is this desire to help and make a difference. And so when people are interested in making, uh, a donation or wanting to get involved. What's the best way? Is there something set up through the United Way or another philanthropic organization? Or should we be thinking about establishing a fund for Tacoma Public Schools if there are people that want to make contributions? Uh, because I feel that this needs to be channeled in some way, but I'm not 100% certain of how to channel it. And we definitely don't want to create, you know, people, uh, attempting to do good, which actually creates more, uh, you know. Challenges for you and your team to have to manage it. So do you have any thoughts on how we might, um. Take people up on their offer to to make donations and to help?
Sure, I would start with, um, Amanda Scott Thomas, because she has been a real great resource and. You know, let me get a subgroup that can sit with Amanda and ta- uh, and talk more broadly. About, you know, what we could set up because she is probably, she is a one-person show right now. So, um, I think it would make sense to get with Amanda and figure out a way to, um. You know, she's definitely the volunteer person and she has matched so many of our volunteer resources. With a source, um, both individually and as groups, but, um, I'll talk to her about a place where we could do donations. I like that idea.
Yeah, I think that that would be helpful. And I know that we've heard from nonprofits when we think about the school day and it's probably not practical. Um, or even age appropriate for some kids to sit in front of a computer screen for six hours a day. Hey, and I know we've heard from some of our partner organizations that want to be a resource to provide that supplemental learning. Which should be, uh, great news to the ears of parents at home that have had students in their house for going on a month. That there are professionals out there, these, uh, these wonderful volunteer partner organizations that want to help students. So I think, um, I like that suggestion of. Uh, Amanda taking the lead to help get that organized. Um, and I also, before we move on, just want to acknowledge, you know, the, the meals and the day camps. Were not, they were the right thing to do, but they were mandated, right? That was under a governor order. And I appreciate how quickly, uh, Chris Williams and his team were able to figure out meal distribution. To me, it's a remarkable accomplishment that we are now serving almost 80,000 meals a day. And to the nutrition services folks that are up there at the crack of dawn, putting all of those food, uh, all of those meal packages together. And to our security folks that are keeping it safe and the, uh. The day camps and the paras and the teachers and the folks that are providing that, uh, service for those families and healthcare workers and first responders. That was the, that was the directive from the governor initially before he even telling us what to do about educating kids was that you will. Feed and provide care for these kids. So Carla, thank you for your leadership and the team and everybody, uh, that's been a part of that. I think that it's something to be proud of. Um, and you guys made it look effortless. So maybe we don't fully understand how complicated it was to pull that together in short order. And certainly to Dr. Garcia, who I know you had tasked as the lead on the day camps, pulling that together with our partners and their willingness to lean in and make it happen. Uh, I know that it's making a difference for thousands of people every day. So thank you for that.
Thank you, uh, Director Heinz. And I want to note that Chris, Chris Williams and, uh, Paul Harris started feeding kids. As soon as line was closed before the governor even made the mandate. So that was something they had started right away. So thank you very much.
Uh, we'll move on now to item 4.2 on the agenda, the 2020 bond construction schedule. Superintendent?
Yes, um, we've asked Chris Williams and Morris Aldridge are here to talk to you about that 2020 construction schedule. And, um, the construction is going on. So that's great to know. Chris?
Uh, thank you, Carla. Um, our team is extremely, uh, happy to present to the board and public. Our recommendation for the 2020 bond construction schedule. Uh, similar to 2013's format, we are focusing primarily on the major school replacements. In regards to the 2020 bond, we're looking at eight projects. Also want to emphasize that these are extreme, extremely difficult times for many sectors, many industries, that includes construction. So there's a high level of uncertainty. With that said, you know, what we present today based on uncertainty could change, uh, in the short term and long term. Uh, with that said, I'm going to pass it on to our Executive Director of Planning and Construction, Morris Aldridge.
Chris, thank you very much. Uh, if we could go ahead and move on to that second slide. We'll talk about the major capital projects and the order that we have those in. Possible if we get that second slide up. Thank you very much. So as we, as we look at the order that we've got. Uh, you'll notice right off the bat, we've got Hunt Middle School there with phase two, uh, that, that, that campus, of course, is going scheduled open in 2021. And then after that, we really had to take a look of what were the needs as we began to move forward and and in putting this schedule together. Uh, one of the things right off the bat that we took into consideration, uh, was Downing Elementary. That was on the 2013 bond that we then, that was moved off of that. Uh, so that's one of the reasons that that is at the top. It's also one of those campuses that does not require a swing site. We're able to build on that property and keep those students in in their classrooms, uh, until the new building goes up and then we will, uh, raise that building. After that, uh, Skyline is the, uh, is is right there with them as well. And Skyline is critical. For the remainder of our bond program, uh, because that is the only site we've got left that's large enough. For us to be able to build a camp, build another campus own and then keep their existing campus as a swing site. Because as Hunt Middle School goes down and then reopens, it's really critical to our path for us to be able to. Leave that campus open so that we can have two swing sites at one time going on. Um, and then after that, we, we've got Fawcett Elementary that would be scheduled to open in 2023. Uh, Fawcett, along with some of the others, as we looked at geographical equity, we felt was very important to show that we were building. All over our district and not just within a restricted area, but we really wanted to make sure that, uh. Our entire district was being covered as we move forward. Um, Bryant would move into, uh. Skyline as their swing site and that with their new building opening in '24. And the reason Bryant is not even up in front of Fawcett there is because Brian actually doesn't fit. Into McKinley when we started looking at a swing site. So we wanted to make sure that we could, we could still. Uh, meet the educational needs of all, of all the students that were there. Uh, their building is is definitely in bad shape as some, as as the others are as well. Um, so we've got them then coming online after that. The following year after that would be Oakland High School. Uh, they would move over to McKinley until their building opens in 2025. We have looked to see. We looked really close to see if it was possible for us to build on the site and keep them there. With the number of programs and things that God, it really was not, uh, so it just, it, it, it is really vital, I think, for, for them to have their full program. Along with their daycare and and their medical staff and everything at the, at their other site. And we'll be, we're able to achieve that over at McKinley. Uh, Lowell then would go to Skyline. Uh, and their new building would actually open in 2026. And then that would be followed by Whittier going to McKinley. Uh, and their new building opened in 2027. And again, as we looked at all of these, it was a number of factors. Uh, again, looking at in the grouping of schools you've got that we have right here, really, they're all pretty much in the same condition. If you've got a few that are a little worse than others, but, um. We believe this is the best order to put those in at the order of recommendation that we would like to to move forward with. Uh, next slide. After that, we're looking at our district's safety and security priorities. We're working with our safety and security department. They are coming up. They've already started working with, uh, Tacoma Police Department. And their, their staff looking at reports from crime statistics to a number of different things, uh, putting a list together, uh, to indicate. Which schools would be first. Uh, but as we, as we go through this, and this slide really just indicates the things that we're actually doing. So I'm going to back up just a second because I've got ahead of myself. Uh, again, just, just to reiterate, we're doing. Again, just, just to reiterate, we're doing our front door entryway, making sure that we can secure those front doors and the rest of our building so that we're controlling access there, camera upgrades throughout so we're uniform, card readers for staff to be able to get into the building more efficiently, and then an intercom system that integrates into our entire security system. If we could go to our next slide. And this is one I kind of started on. So what, as our security department is coming up with their list, they've got their priorities. And then we've also got those campuses that really are going to be very easy for us to fix some things out there. And those are ones where we're not actually having to go in and do any, build any walls, take down any walls, because they've got good line of sight, and we just simply need to go in and upgrade the camera systems, do their badge access, and control those front doors. So we've got a list of those campuses that we'll be working with. We're going to do as many of these as possible. We're also going to try and make sure as we're doing this to utilize as many of our local small contractors, because one of the things that we've told our, our voters all along is that we are going to utilize our local folks. So we've been working with both the city of Tacoma and other entities, looking at who are the folks on their list that can actually do this work. And as Chris, Chris mentioned earlier, right now, though, with COVID-19, it's really having a difficult impact on our small contractors and small subs that we would use on some of these. So that may impact how fast we can go with this, but we'll be able to tell more about that as we get, get closer to it, to that date. Next slide, please. And on this one, this is the, really the rest of the improvements that we're looking at around the district. We've got them listed here in alphabetical order. What's going to be critical here, once, once we have dollars in November, is doing those projects that do not interfere with our academic program. So when we start, even though we know that boilers and roofs are extremely important to us to getting those things fixed, you can't go in and shut down a boiler in November, December. We can't start taking out roofs during that time of year when we've got students in the building. So a lot of those things that, that are again, very critical, won't occur until a little later where you may be able to see some things like our athletic fields and some of those things that will actually get going right away. And as we look at all the programs and things that are there, we're going to get as much of that done as quickly as possible. Most of it's spreading out over a total of about five years. Any questions on what we've got?
Morris, before I take questions from board members?
Yes.
Would you clarify? I know that there was some guidance that came out in terms of construction projects and what districts could be doing, could be doing during this shutdown. Could you just give us a high-level overview of what that entails and how the district is complying?
Yes. Chris, do you want to talk, touch on that? Would you like me to?
Yes. According to the government, governor's statement, it involves all public works projects can continue. So these are deemed essential projects. So with that stated, we shouldn't have any delays with continuing our three major projects that we have going, going right now. Morris, do you see anything different?
Well, you're, you're exactly right. The only, the only impact that we're seeing is that we do have some subs that are hesitant to work depending on what their jobs are. I can tell you that all three of our contractors that we're currently working with, and that's Corsmo over at the Bowe site, Turner Construction on Bernie, and Apsher over at Hunt, they have all integrated safety programs to make sure that we're keeping a maximum distance. And of course, depending on what you're actually doing, that has, it has an impact. But to give you an example, over at, at the, at the Bowe site, we actually limit the number of contractors or subcontractors that can be within a section of the building at a time so that we don't get trades that are, that are not necessarily working together, interacting together. So if a company is coming in and they're working on electrical, then only though that company will be in that particular zone. If we've got a company that's doing some painting, then their guys are, are working in another section and they're rotating those through. So they have all put together plans for us that we have to know exactly how, how they are responding to what the governor's mandates are from, from a safety standpoint. And we're just slowly moving forward. We hope that we don't have any, any delays, but at this point, if a sub decides that, well, we're not going to work for whatever that reason may be, then we can look to see if we can find someone else, but we may have an impact there, but hopefully we do not.
And I just want to add on to what Morris, Morris stated. You know, we could obviously have challenges with our labor workforce, all because the governor mandated that public work projects can't continue, doesn't mean those subcontractors want to continue, providing the difficult circumstances that we're in. So I just want to be clear with that.
Okay. Thank you both for the clarification. And with this construction schedule, is that something the board will need to formally adopt at some point?
I think it's our, our recommendation at this point. I don't, I don't foresee that the board has to adopt it, but this is just our, our first initial recommendation.
Okay, thank you. And with that, I'll take questions. Vice President Cobb, do you have any questions or comments?
I don't. I just want to thank you all for the thorough presentation as usual, and look forward to continuing to take the steps we need to in order to get these projects launched as soon as possible. Can you say, oh, I do, I guess have one question. When, when do the funds from this new bond actually become available? What's the start?
I believe that is a Roslin.
Roslin question.
I'm pretty sure, or she can answer that.
I'm here. We haven't sold them yet, so we would have to go through a sale process. Our anticipation at this point is that we would be out in the market sometime in October, and it's undetermined what amount we would go out for at this point in time, just given the volatility in the market. So I would expect that we would get at least enough to get a year's worth of construction projects completed, and then we might regroup from there, depending on the circumstances of the time we go out for sale.
Okay, thank you.
All righty, thank you, Vice President Cobb. Director Keating, do you have any questions or comments?
I just have a comment. I really appreciate the explanation of the, using Skyline as the site, because that was not something that I understood previously. So I do appreciate that understanding in terms of why Bryant is in the position that they're in, in the, in the lineup, I guess. So I just wanted to thank you for that information, and I think that's really helpful.
All right, thank you, Director Keating. Director Leone, do you have any questions or comments?
No questions or comments right now. Just thank you very much for that great presentation.
Director Bombright, do you have any questions or comments?
Maybe just a further point of clarification for public curiosity. Based on what you guys have all said about timing and about we won't have money, this new money won't be available until probably November at the very earliest. So that would preclude the, or I should ask the question, would that preclude some of this work that you've got to do? No, actually, maybe not. Well, yeah, would it preclude the work that you're, that we're planning to do on some of the quick fixes or the roofs or things like that, since, since now the schools are empty? We can't, or can we go in and start working on some of that stuff and getting it done upfront? Or do we have to wait because that's being paid out of the bond measure? We don't have the bond measure money yet.
We would have to wait because we do not have those dollars available.
Okay. That's, that's what I figured, just wanted to make that clear, because it seemed like a logical thing. The schools are sitting there empty. Yeah.
Yeah.
And also, I just wanted to add, there's also an extensive procurement process involved in it. So all, if we receive money today, doesn't mean we can start tomorrow. We still have to go through an extensive procurement process to secure the best price for the district.
Which is why the deadline, the dates for all of these seem so far out, just because there is a long process you have to go through. Thank you, gentlemen. You, you do a crackerjack job. It's amazing. Thank you.
All righty, thank you both for the presentation. And we're going to move back in the agenda, because we were so excited to get going with the agenda, that I neglected to ask for a motion to adopt the agenda. So at this time, I would ask for a motion to adopt the agenda.
I move for the adoption of the agenda.
Is there a second?
I second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Now we'll leapfrog number four, go into number five, members of the public wishing to address the board. General Counsel Trueblood, would you give us an overview of the process that we went through to come up with this new way for the members of the public to still be able to provide public comment in a virtual environment?
Yes, thank you. We are still doing our best to comply with the Open Public Meetings Act, and thanks to the governor who issued some guidance, and also to the Attorney General's Office who issued some guidance, we have followed that, as well as we watched how other agencies were holding their meetings as well, the State Board of Education, the City of Tacoma. And so pooling all of that together, we came up with this process. So one of the things to keep in mind is that under the modifications to the Open Public Meetings Act, the governor has suspended the obligation to have everyone in the same place. So tonight's meeting, we thank Kevin Medford, who's there, and I believe also Tom is there to actually make the technology work, but all of us are participating virtually. We've posted the meeting agenda on the front door of the building in compliance with the governor's orders. And then we have put on the agenda that members of the public wishing to give us public comment during the meeting, to submit that in writing twenty-four hours in advance of the meeting to the board secretary. And then we will take the comments. We've asked that they stay about the same, about the two to three minute range, which translates to about three hundred to five hundred words. We will add that into the meeting minutes. If we get it in time, we'll also add it to the meeting agenda, and then make sure that all of the board members are able to read the comments, and they'll be part of the meeting record.
All right, thank you for that explanation. Superintendent, did we receive any public comment for this meeting, this evening's meeting?
We received one submission for public comment that was received after the published timeline. Megan Capes addressed the board regarding use of school facilities for homeless shelters. Ms. Capes' letter, in alignment with our policy, will be included in the record, the meeting minutes.
All righty, thank you for that. And for the viewing public, we've already been in conversation with her on this topic, and let her know that this is a policy issue for the city of Tacoma, and have included the mayor and the city manager, and that if this is a part of the emergency that we're under, that that becomes a decision also through the Pierce County Emergency Management Department, and that the superintendent has committed that the school district is ready to look at any requests that the city might have in order to support that need. Move on with the agenda. Item number six, essential matters, six point one, adoption of resolution number two zero seven six, and acceptance of contract between Tacoma School District Number Ten and Skanska USA Building Incorporated. Mr. Williams?
The chief operating officer recommends that the board of directors adopt resolution number two zero seven six for the acceptance of project completion, and improve the acceptance of contract for Skanska US Buildings for the Macarver Elementary Modernization and Stewart Middle School Modernization Projects.
Is there a motion to approve?
I still move.
Is there a second? Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries five zero. Item six point two, resolution number two zero seven five, unlimited tax general obligation refunding bonds, 2020 taxable. Ms. Medina?
Thank you. The chief financial officer recommends that the board of directors approve resolution number two zero seven five, providing for the refunding of current outstanding bonds and the issuance of unlimited tax general obligation refunding bonds, 2020 taxable. Just as a quick note, this is a resolution that would allow us to refinance current series 2014 and 2015 bonds, and would provide our taxpayers with savings so that we would have less debt service requirements, principal and interest requirements, so that we would be able to provide a savings for taxes. Now, with the volatility that we've seen in the market, it's uncertain as to how much money that may render as a savings and at what point in time we would be able to go out. So this resolution provides us with the authority to be able to make that sale when the, the market is recovering and we're in a position to actually make a savings. So that's that. And also, I know that Director Cobb had asked a question earlier today that was relayed to me, and I want to make sure that I address it, although I don't know that it's been relayed to me, I'm not sure I understand it, if it was relayed to me, but I want to make sure that I say that in the situation where we have a bond sale and there are bonds that are outstanding that aren't sold, then we would have them, they would usually be picked up through our underwriter. And so we wouldn't be, once the, once the bonds are sold, they're a financial instrument. So I think that answers the question, but if it didn't, please let me know. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And the board appreciates you and the superintendent always looking for ways to save money for our taxpayers, so hopefully the conditions become favorable so that we can do that. Vice President Cobb, did that answer your question?
It generally did. I was just like, the notion of trying to, yes, it answered my question. But just as a comment, I just want to reiterate, the layperson's analysis of where the savings come from that you said I got right at a previous board meeting, just saying it again for the public, like, because interest rates are lower, by doing this, we can raise basically in taxes the same amount of money, but in a way that costs our taxpayers less, like, because we have to pay less for the bonds, it's saving taxpayers money to get to the same level of revenue from the taxes that people are paying.
Right, we would have a lower principal and interest that would be due on the bonds, and so we would have to raise fewer dollars.
Okay, great. Thank you. Are there any additional questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Do we have to move, we have to move it, move it in second, don't we? Did we already do that? Oh, okay, no one.
I believe we have. General Counsel, did we move in second this agenda item?
I'm, I'm not sure that we did.
Tanya, do you have a record of it? Right, is there a motion?
Yeah, it won't hurt to do it again.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve resolution number two zero seven five?
I still move.
Is there a second? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries five zero. Item number six point three, a resolution of the board of directors, Tacoma School District Number Ten, extending the district-wide emergency closure and suspending policy rules and/or regulations due to COVID-19. And before the superintendent makes a recommendation, I will note that this is something that during agenda review, we asked for, given that the circumstances have changed since the initial resolution was adopted. Superintendent?
The superintendent recommends that the board approve the resolution, and I've got an echo there, extending the district-wide emergency closure until eleven fifty-nine PM, June nineteenth, 2020, and suspending policies, rules, and/or regulations due to COVID-19.
Thank you. General Counsel, would you please read the resolution?
Yes, whereas on March twelfth, 2020, Governor Inslee issued proclamation twenty dash oh eight, ordering school districts in Pierce County to close no later than twelve oh one AM, March seventeenth, 2020, through eleven fifty-nine PM, April twenty-fourth, 2020, as a strategy for slowing the spread of COVID-19. Whereas on March twelfth, 2020, the Tacoma School District Board of Directors approved resolution number twenty seventy-four, declaring a district-wide emergency closure based upon the governor's order. Whereas on March thirteenth, the governor also issued proclamation twenty dash oh nine, ordering statewide school closures until April twenty-fourth, 2020. And whereas on April sixth, 2020, the governor issued proclamation twenty dash oh nine point oh one, extending proclamations twenty dash oh eight and twenty dash oh nine, and ordering a statewide K through twelve school closure until eleven fifty-nine PM, June nineteenth, 2020. Now therefore be it resolved. That, number one, the board extends the district-wide emergency closure as described in resolution. that, number one, the board extends the district-wide emergency closure as described in resolution 2074 until 11:59 PM, June 19, 2020. Number two, all other terms and conditions of resolution 2074 remain in full force and effect, and it is further resolved that the district will continue to follow the guidance of the governor as described in proclamations 20-08, 20-09, and 20-09.01, and that of the Office of the Superintendent of Public Instruction, subject to their ongoing guidance.
All right. Thank you very much. And I believe for the resolution, do we need a roll call vote?
Yes.
Right.
We'll start with President Heinz.
And have we taken a motion to adopt?
Oh, I don't think we did.
Is there a motion to adopt?
I move approval of item 6.3.
I second.
Thank you.
And I'll start with the roll call vote now.
Please.
We'll start with President Heinz.
Aye.
Vice President Cobb?
Aye.
Director Leon?
Aye.
Director Baumbright?
Aye.
And Director Keating?
Aye.
The motion passes five zero.
All right. Thank you very much. That brings us to item number seven, the announcement of future board meetings. The Attorney General's Office has been very specific that public bodies are only to convene if they have essential business to conduct. And so my recommendation is that we keep the Thursday, April 16 study session on the books, but perhaps the topic will change as Vice President Cobb and I are in conversation with the superintendent through our normal agenda review, and that we also keep the Thursday, April 23, 2020 business meeting on the books, if there's essential business that needs to be conducted on that day as well. There any objections to that? Hearing none. I will take that as concurrence. Item number eight is adjournment. Is there a...
Sure. I mean, President Heinz, no objection, but just as we continue to operate in this virtual environment, I thought it was great that we sent out Facebook communications, advertising, opportunity to give public comment for this meeting. But I think that if we can do more of that, like a daily post, just push that out there, given that we're transitioning the way that we're meeting, I've kind of seen that a lot of people are tuning in. So the more that we can get folks aware of the opportunity to listen in on how we're moving forward with this, I think that would be great. So just pushing out even more opportunities to engage in any meetings that we have.
Great. Thank you, Superintendent. Would you please work with your team to make that happen? All right. You're on mute, but I'm thinking you're saying yes. Yes, thumbs up. All right. Thank you very much. And with that, we are adjourned. Have a good evening, everybody.
Thank you.
Good night, dear.
Good night.